Ladies and gentlemen, it's five o'clock. We're going to start the Scottsboro City Board of Education Board meeting. The date is ten thirty, twenty four, five P.M. Could I ask James Balleo to come up for the pledge allegiance? And he is from Junior High School.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we remain standing, please. Gracious God, you solemn Father, we come at this appointed place at this appointed time to do the business at hand. We thank you for students like Mr. Balleo, James, and we ask God that you just bless our meeting tonight, that we'll be able to transact the business that needs to be done. We thank you for our community, and God, we just pray for those communities that have been impacted by our recent storms. We pray for those families and those schools and those communities. We ask now to be with us and protect us from danger seen unseen, said unsaid, real or imagined, spoken or unspoken. We'll forever give you the praise, the glory and the honor. Help us to use this sermon in all that we do, in Christ's name and prayer. Amen. James, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to do a round of thanks.
James, James.
Oh, come on. You didn't know this all was going to happen. Why aren't we looking first?
Exactly, you didn't tell them everything, did you?
Not everything.
Thanks, sir.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Childers.
Thank you. We have some recognition tonight. Some students at Scottsboro High School were recently named as National American Scholarship Tenney Finalists. Mr. Jet Hubbs, who is our principal at the high school, would you please come up and tell us about these students?
You're messing me. I'm just excited to be here. You know, in my time at the high school, just really, really blessed student body, so receptive of changes and things that had going on, and it's been great. So we have students who stand out and step out and show out and are so blessed with their abilities, and we have the opportunity to recognize them. It's a blessing for me to be able to do that. So at this time, Ethan Evans and Josh, I think you guys will come up. So Josh and Ethan both took the PSAT, I believe it was last year, junior year, and scored really well, and so much, much better than I can imagine. I know both of these young men have outstanding APT scores as well, and so the future is extremely bright for these young men. You know, there's about fifty thousand kids who take this particular test and apply for this particular program, and only about sixteen thousand end up in this, in this recognition, and their names are even in the little booklet, and I think I'm just proud that Scottsboro High School has that. We don't, we don't have a lot of National American Tenney Finals, so we're really, really pleased and proud of these guys and the things that they're going to accomplish, and I look forward to, I'll dispense with the guys, I'm looking forward to scholarship night, to see what kind of money we bring in, right? So I'll give them a round of applause.
He's been asking me to say this, but he and Mr. Hasler at Northeast earlier today. Yep, since you've been at the high school, you've hit the ground running, so we just want to commend you and thank you for what you do and your staff as well.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
My APT?
Yeah, we're good.
Eighteen to twenty-three. I barely missed it.
At this time, I have some certificates that I would like to present our board members. You may remember at our last board meeting, we, when was our last board meeting? We recognized our board members for their comprehensive hours, if they completed different levels, the AASB recognizes. These certificates of completion are for the 2023-24 year solely, and so each board member is tasked with completing six hours of training toward Government Improvement Act Training Requirements, and again, these are 2023-24. So I won't make you get back up, and then I'll, I'll come to you. But I'd like to recognize Ms. Shain Minnott. Thank you, ma'am. You come up. Dr. Barry Spears. Thank you, sir. Mr. Jason Williams. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hager Wusler. Thank you, sir. Okay, I'll turn it back over to him, Ms. Williams.
At this time, can I get approval for the agenda?
Some of it.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved. Ms. Childers?
Thank you. All right, we'll move into our consent items. Roman numeral five, please. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the consent items as follows. Board minutes, August fifteenth. Called board meeting, August fifteenth, 2024. Work session, September fifth, 2024. Board meeting, September tenth, 2024. Called board meeting. Financial statement and bank reconciliation for August 2024, and the fundraisers as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
So make a motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item number six, roman numeral six. Action item, letter A, is personnel. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the personnel agenda as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Some of it.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item C, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the additions to the 2024-25 supplemental positions as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Some of it.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item D, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the additions to the 2024-25 supplemental positions as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Make a motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item C, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the additions to the 2024-25 sub-list as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Some of it.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item D, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the 2024-25 contracts for title one staff as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Make a motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item E, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the after-school tutoring contracts as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item F, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the contract for Scottsboro High School and Scottsboro Junior High School Basketball Gym Cleaning Services as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item G, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the lawn care service contracts as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Some of it.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item H, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the FY25 salary schedule as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Some of it.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item I, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the game time playground grant application in the amount of two hundred and one thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and six cents, paid with FY25 APS funds and Club Wildcat funds as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Some of it.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
That's good to go now, right?
Yes, we are good to go. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just matching.
It was a grant. It's matching, and you can see on the, they're broken out into two actual invoices, so the first invoice is what we are required to pay initially, just as basically a contractual agreement, and that includes the matched amount that we were allocated in the grant. And we did make one, I believe one slot change, Ms. Beckman, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Ms. Carrie Bradford wanted to make a couple of changes, different swings, so we added those, and when we did, that kind of changed the total surface area.
Did you mention the other surface area needed from the safety?
Right, so we're good to go and ready to move forward. Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item J, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the purchase of two new buses from Southland Transportation Group at a cost of three hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents, paid with FY25 APS funds and state fleet renewal funds as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Make a motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
One question. This Southland Transportation, is that the group we've always used for?
As far as I know, it is. I know that Mr. Arnold could not be in here this evening. Does anyone know the answer?
Yes, ma'am. It is, and it's probably part of a kind of cooperative. They actually have a bid through cooperative that we use that for, so most questions you have.
Well, where is Bluebird in there? Have we ever considered using Bluebird? Have that ever come up?
I don't, I think they are a little more expensive in the bid, and so I think really Southland is usually the.
Okay, thank you.
And to answer your question, I'm not sure. I believe that we use Southland. We could double check that and see, but I would believe that's been over the years, that's what we use.
I don't think you have any Bluebird.
Well, I haven't seen any, I was wondering if we had any.
That's a great question. Thank you, Ms. May.
Does the timer on here? Remember last year, there was parts that, they were, yeah, last year was a headache, but I didn't see it, but I didn't know.
It's usually several months, and anytime you're ordering those special education bus with those particular features, it's going to extend that time a little bit, so I would probably say February-ish before they're, somewhere in that would be my best guess.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item K, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the out-of-state travel and leave request as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item N, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the 2024-25 system and school continuous improvement plans as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item M, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the 2024-25 MOU between Scottsboro City Schools and Help Connect America as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Some of it.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item N, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the 2024-25 MOU between Scottsboro City Schools and the Bridge as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Some of it.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item T, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the MOA between Scottsboro City Schools and Northeast Alabama Community College Wellstone Launch Program as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item P, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the 2024-25 MOU between Scottsboro City Schools and Northeast Alabama Community College Wellstone Launch Program as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item Q, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the MOA between Scottsboro City Schools and Northeast Alabama Community College Dual Enrollment for Dual Credit Agreement as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Make that motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Williams, I guess I must have left my phone in the, in the car. Mr. Has, Mr. Tubbs, and maybe it's somebody else, and Ms. Childers, thank you for providing the service that you did today. We were at the Work Skills Center Development, whatever it is, whatever it is up there in Scottsboro.
Work Development Center.
Workforce, what is it? Workforce Development Skills Training Center. Okay, okay, okay. So while, before we got started, a young man came over to me and introduced himself, and he was taller than I was, and he is in the dual, dual enrollment program from Scottsboro, and he is in the welding program at, at Northeast, and he is doing extremely well. And I took a picture of him. Well, you didn't take that picture. Okay, okay, okay. But I'm just saying, this program, these, these services are so, so valuable, and, and I was just listening to, was that a person that we were talking to today, and she indicated that her son had taken some kind of part of this type of training?
Skill assessment.
Skill assessment, yeah. And so the regular, what was it, Home Depot, what was he, what was he working at?
I believe that's where she's at.
Okay, so the regular pay was like twelve dollars an hour, but because he had taken this type of certification, he got bumped up to three more dollars per hour, so he started right off the bat with fifteen dollars an hour.
He was credentialed, and some, some of the students are not, and so that's part of that process. So you earn the college credit while your credential go in there.
Yeah, and something else was going on, but I just went, since we were on cue, I just thought I would just mention that.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Spears. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item R, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the Alabama Supercomputer Authority Agreement as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Some of it.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action item S, it is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board approve the 2024-25 Scottsboro City Schools Internship Memorandums of Agreement as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
Some of it.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Thank you. Turn the reading, Ms. Williams.
All right, at this time, we have a selection of delegate and alternate delegates for the AASB 2024 convention. Dr. Spears, you are our delegate, correct?
Yeah, I was your delegate this week here too. Yes.
We, we had to vote on this, so I put a motion.
Yeah, yeah, I already have it on my calendar.
Okay. You have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
About a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Spears is our delegate.
Help me out, Ms. Childs.
I'm with it.
And I'll turn it back over to Ms. Childers.
Thank you. Before we go into the continuous improvement plan presentations for this evening, I would like for our principals to acknowledge some staff members who are here tonight. We are very excited to welcome some new teachers we've been able to add at Caldwell, and so that being said, well, let me start by saying we also filled our Behavior Intervention position, and that position is one, if you recall, that is for students who are elementary in age and place them in the alternative school setting. And we're very pleased to announce that Ms. Anna Rogers was, was our selection, and the board approved Ms. Anna Rogers' transfer from kindergarten at Nelson Primary into that position. And we're so proud to offer that position to Ms. Rogers. She is a twenty-plus-year veteran in Scottsboro City Schools. She does an outstanding job in the classroom, and while she's going to be missed in that classroom setting, I know she's going to impact many more students being able to be in the setting that she's in. So I know she isn't here with us tonight, but I do want to extend congratulations and tell her how happy we are and how proud that we could place her in that position, so thank you to the board members for that. I'm going to turn it over to the principals now. So Ms. Ford, I almost said, I did not mean to, but I almost said not to. I'm getting there, Ms. Ford. If you don't mind, would you please tell us who is taking Ms. Rogers' place in the kindergarten classroom?
Good evening, and we're excited, and I'm excited, to interview Stephanie Rehega. She is from Scottsboro, and she has been with Scottsboro City Schools for five years. She's already part of the Gup Cat family, so she's very excited about the role she's going to be taking as kindergarten teacher. So welcome.
Congratulations. Very excited for you, and I know you're going to do a great job in that kindergarten classroom.
I am super excited.
Thank you. And also, just to add to that, Ms. Rogers has graciously agreed for the first couple of days next week, as these, as these little ones, my littles, as I like to call them, as they transition, she's willing to work alongside her in the classroom in just a few days to help that transition go a little more smoothly, so we thank Ms. Rogers for that as well. At Caldwell, Mr. Amos, would you please let us know what's going on over there?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So Ms. Dana Wheeler, who's joining Caldwell, our first grade, we're able to add first grade classroom position. We're apparently, her she comes to us with seventeen years of experience, and she has been at Nelson the past two years, is that correct?
Just this year.
Just this year, okay, just this year. So we sold her for, so we are, sorry about that, but we're black. And then we also have a second grade unit, as you guys are aware, Ms. Meredith Black is going to fill that for us. We're looking forward to adding both of these to our staff. We're about to slip out in just a minute, go meet the parents, so, you know, these guys being, they're very flexible, and they're looking forward to, you know, getting started. Tomorrow's going to be a whirlwind, I'm sure, getting classrooms ready, and they're running, ground running Monday morning. So we're looking forward to it. Just thank you guys for making opportunities, you know, exist, I guess, or come to fruition, and we're looking forward to it.
Congratulations.
Okay, and so at that time, now, we're supposed to start our continuous improvement plan presentations, and we have Nelson and Caldwell up for tonight, but I think just because of the timing, I don't want things to be running late for that presentation for, for the parents to meet, so, so if y'all don't mind, you're welcome to go at this time, if y'all want to go and get transitioned. Congratulations again, we're very proud and excited for what Monday holds for our students and for you.
Ms. Childers, if I may, go back to section cue right quick. The reason I mentioned that was because that student was a Brownwood student. Okay, y'all believe me? All right, yes.
Okay, and so that being said, I'm going to ask, Mr. Has is going to give our system presentation this evening, and then we'll check our time, and Mr. Holt is also there and willing to do his CIP presentation as well, and we will have, at the work session, we'll have everyone complete, so we'll get, we'll get Nelson, we'll get Caldwell, Collins, and the high school then.
All right, thank you, Ms. Childers.
Thank you, sir.
I originally planned for this presentation to last about ten minutes, but Ms. Corky Hood begged me to extend, extend this, make it thirty minutes, so if I do go over, it's Ms. Corky Hood's fault.
Yes.
Again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present our CIP. As you guys know, in education, especially, a lot of acronyms that we like to use, and CIP, just so that everybody understands, it does stand for continuous improvement. We're always looking for continuous improvement with our schools because we're never satisfied. We're never satisfied, which is where we are. We always want to continue to improve and move forward. Also, with our continuous improvement plans under the direction of Ms. Childers, we, we strive to make sure that our CIP meets all our strategic goal, our five-year strategic plan, and also align with the state's plan for the multi-tiered systems of support. So that, that is where a lot of this plan comes from and a lot of our goals. So we start with academic goal, because of course academics, that's what we're here for. So academic goal. This year, our academic goal, we pushed it from sixty-five percent to seventy percent. The reason behind that is because we have several grades within our school that met our goal from last year, which was sixty-five percent proficiency on reading and math. So seventy percent is, is a pretty ambitious goal, as you can imagine, but we're going to strive for. You can see here it says critical initiatives. Critical initiatives are actions that we're trying to take in order to meet these goals. So you can see, some of the things that I have highlighted here are things that we're looking at to try to bridge that gap. Every kid has, has weaknesses, every kid has strengths. So what we do is we do a lot of data analysis in order to try to identify those strengths and weaknesses, and we want to, of course, amplify the strengths, and we want to find ways to intervene where we find, where we find gaps, so that we can help them continue to achieve. So that's our critical initiatives, to look strongly at our interventions, and through PST meetings, through, through monthly data meetings, we're looking to try to identify these areas where we can, can help them grow, and grow all students. And for key measures, these are what we're using to determine our data. We're looking at our STAR progress monitoring assessments, and also, of course, our standardized assessments in the spring. So moving past just our goals, I do want to talk, though, a little bit about some of the great things that are going on in our school system. Sometimes it's hard because we're always looking forward, that we don't take enough time to sit back and really appreciate and celebrate the good things that are going on. And that's one of the things that I really want to express tonight, is a lot of the good things that are going on within our school system, and a lot of the hard work that has went into a lot of these achievements. First thing I wanted to point out was our accreditation scores. Now, you'll notice, these aren't from this year, but it was from, from a couple of years ago, but it's something that I feel like kind of, kind of goes into, you know, the hard work, and again, the proof, the proof's in the pudding, of what kind of school system But it's something that I feel like kind of, kind of goes into, you know, the hard work and, and again, the, the proof, the proof's in the pudding of what kind of school system that we have here at Scottsboro City Schools. Uh, you'll notice our advanced ed cognia accreditation reviews, uh, our score's pretty, pretty wonderful. Uh, just in order to, to kind of explain what this process is, this is taking administrators and education experts from outside of Scottsboro City Schools and inviting them to come in and take a look at everything we do. So again, this is an unbiased look at our school system. You can see the last time that we were accredited was back in two thousand fifteen. We had a score of two hundred eighty-nine, which is a great score, especially when you look at the national average. And that, that's schools in Massachusetts, California, Florida, everywhere. The national average is two eighty-two, and the last time we were at a two eighty-nine. So that, that's a wonderful score. Well, you can see the last time that we were accredited in two thousand twenty-two, which is a couple of years ago, notice the growth? You know, again, the national average is somewhere between the two seventy-eight to two eighty-three mark, and we were scored at a three forty-eight. That's, again, unbiased experts coming in, looking at our school system, everything that we do, and they see that we are an exceptional school system. I think that's something that needs to really be bragged about amongst our, our school system, amongst our community, that we have a fantastic school system, something I'm very proud of. Also, when you look at our most recent data, again, we call this longitudinal, longitudinal data review. Again, we're looking at the long term, we're not just looking at one year. Again, you can see our data review for the past four years. Uh, the red is where we were back in two thousand twenty-one, as we were coming out, out of COVID. Uh, you can see that in our ACAP data for ELA, that's the first bar, you can see that we had a little bit of a dip there in two thousand twenty-two, but from then we've seen steady growth to where this last spring, uh, in two thousand twenty-four, we had fifty-nine point seven of our students, and this, this is grades two through eight, that scored proficient on ELA ACAP data. The black bar that you see there, that's the state average. Uh, when I looked it up today, the state average for ELA is fifty-seven percent, so we're at fifty-nine point seven. So we're well above state averages. Then you look at math data. At the state, we're not where we want to be when it comes to math, but you can see that here in Scottsboro, we're showing great growth over the last four years. Math ACAP data, uh, we started, again, as we came out of COVID in two thousand twenty-one, uh, you know, in, in, in twenty-six, twenty-six percent. Now we're at thirty-seven point five. Again, state average, uh, when I look at this, the math state average is thirty-four point two, again, we're at thirty-seven point five. And then you look at our science data, this is something we're very proud of, we're going to talk a lot, a lot more about here in just a minute when we look at workforce development. Uh, but you can see we've shown steady improvement, uh, up to forty-eight percent. Again, the state average this past year was thirty-seven, we're at forty-eight. So we're well above state average. And in fact, from last, uh, from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, we improved seven point one percent. That's the fifth highest growth in the state when it comes to science. So that's some, some really encouraging data. And again, this is, this is what people look at when they come to look at our school system and see, you know, is this a thriving viable school system? This data says, yes, yes, we are.
And I would add right there, we want our scores aligned. See, y'all saw our goal is seventy percent. Well, we don't want to align our, our scores with the state average, we want to align them with the national. So that's why, and we're, we're working there, we're going to get there, we're going to get that A system.
And you might say, well, we're at fifty-nine point seven, so why would we put the goal all the way up to seven? Again, that is grades two through eight.
Right.
Again, as the, as we get to older grades, once we get to seventh and eighth grade, it's a lot harder to meet seventy percent. But we already have some of our third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade students that are already meeting that mid mark. That's why we want to push it up to seven, okay? But you can see we're, we're doing some wonderful things in our classrooms when it comes to second through eighth grade ACAP data. Next is our high school, ACT data, grade eleven. And this is our ACT scores over the past four years. Uh, the one to the far left, that's one as a parent, you got a student at high school, uh, you're really concerned about. That's the composite score. And we, we want to see our kids obviously make a great score on that ACT because that means a lot of, a lot of, a lot of scholarship money. But you can see where we were back in two thousand twenty-one. You can see there's been some COVID dip, but very exciting stuff, Mr. Tusk. Last year we showed amazing growth, uh, up to eighteen point four, to an exceptional group of kids. And again, exceptional teachers that have done a great job with them. Then you see our math, science, English, and reading scores. Again, very proud of our rap and reading, but in all of those, when you compare them from where we were three, four years ago to where we are now, amazing growth. And this is something that should be celebrated, not only amongst, inside our school system, but amongst our community, our business leaders, uh, all of us, because our kids are doing great things, because our teachers are doing great things. So again, something to be very proud of.
Mr. Haas, that black bar that's on the left right there.
That is the state average.
Is that going across?
Yes, sir, and that is seventeen point four. The state average is seventeen point four, we scored eighteen point four. So we're a full composite point above the state average.
And I would also point out, the, um, ACT is required by all eleventh grade students, and so whether they are college bound or not, um, every student has to take this. And so we want to prepare them for whatever workforce they're going in, but I just wanted to make sure that I clarified that, that it's not optional for students.
Yes, every student takes it, even if they really care less about, you know, the ACT, and they know that they're going straight into the workforce, they still take it. But we also, of course, have the students that are going to, like the National American Finals that we had tonight, uh, that were trying to knock it out. So again, eighteen point four, very proud of this. So that leads us now to the school report card. And this is the, uh, the history of the school report card from Scottsboro City Schools. You can see that in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen was the first year where we had this new state report card. And you can see the historical trend of where we've been. Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, that was before COVID. Since then, we've, we've scored a steady eighty-seven. But I want to go back to something. We scored a steady eighty-seven where you see the blue and the yellow. And then go back to the ACAP, the blue and the yellow. And now you look at this year, the green. Well, I'm not going to, uh, make any predictions of what our school report card may be. But when, because there's a lot of different factors that go into it, not just simply, uh, that data. You also take into account things like CCR rate, which we'll discuss here in just a minute. Uh, you also take into account attendance data. So we're not sure what it may be, but I'm, I'm going to go ahead and, and go out on a limb and say it's going to be a little bit higher than an eighty-seven. Okay? So we're excited about where we may be and where we may fall. And again, that's to be celebrated as a school system. Got here a, a screen full of, of, of information that talks about, again, some of the wonderful things that our teachers are doing with our kids throughout our school system that we can be proud of. Things like the high school being awarded the college successful award. When you think about that, we were one, uh, from the college success award, Scottsboro High School is one of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two schools in this, in this entire nation that was awarded the college successful award. There's over twenty thousand high schools, or one of nineteen hundred that was awarded that. That's correct. All right, Scottsboro Junior High School, we talked about this in the past, but as we went through the A-plus college ready, uh, uh, process for the last couple of years, we were awarded the school of excellence, and then the school of distinction for having it for two years because of our students showing growth on the PSA two. Collins being awarded the class banner school, and then the high flying school. The only reason we haven't been named the high flying school at the end since then is because they haven't awarded it to me. But the high flying school, uh, only, let me see. Only sixty-six schools in Alabama were awarded the high flying school. And again, that's out of, uh, several hundred schools in, in this school, in this state. Caldwell had ninety-six point seven percent of third graders score proficient this past spring. It's not over seventy percent poverty. And that should be celebrated. The state average was ninety-one percent, we had ninety-six point seven. You can see, while we've had a lot of success on the ACT for the past couple of years, because we've really invested in it. Uh, we've invested seventeen thousand dollars, that was from our ESRA funds, uh, to be able to, to give our, our juniors the ACT with writing in the fall before they take it in the spring so that they will have experience with it. Uh, we've also invested twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars from a grant to offer ACT instructional mastery training for our high school teachers. They said that was one of the best professional developments they've ever had. Then look at our AP results. In two thousand twenty-three, eighty-nine percent of AP literature students made a three or above, that means they passed. The national average, nowhere close to that. Um, let's see here where the national average is. Uh, when it comes to AP lit, the national pass rate is seventy-seven point nine. That's the nation, that's not Alabama. Seventy-seven point nine, we had eighty-nine percent twenty-three. This past year, just found this out today from Ms. Paradise, one hundred percent of our AP lit kids passed. National average is seventy-seven point nine. Okay? Then when you, we go to the hardest test that AP offers, which is AP Calc, in two thousand twenty-three, we had one hundred percent of our students pass the AP Calc test. And, and again, that is in this weight class, one hundred percent. National average, fifty-eight point four. And then this year, fifty-eight point three percent. So in other words, we're right there at the national average this year. Amazing things going on in those classrooms. And then, Dr. Spears, you were talking about this a little bit earlier, about our students taking dual enrollment courses. Scottsboro City Schools took four hundred and nine dual enrollment courses last year at Northeast, we're number one. Uh, we're, we're their biggest partner, and they take it free of charge, by the way, because we wrote a CCR grant that we were awarded last year, a fifty thousand dollar CCR grant that allows every kid to take a dual enrollment course free of charge, that's college credit, free. So that brings me to workforce development, which is the second major plan or goal within our CIP. Because this is, this is our, our main goal here, to prepare graduates so that once they leave our school system, they're ready for the world that they're going to be encountering. Fifty-five percent of students assessed in science will demonstrate proficiency, that is our goal. In the past, we haven't really focused on the science proficiency, but we want to move that up. If you remember, we looked at it earlier, we had forty-eight percent of our students that were proficient in science. We want to move, move that up to fifty-five percent. To get them there, well, we're going to, to, to really invest in STEAM. STEAM stands for, again, this is another one of our acronyms, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. We're going to embed it in our K through twelve instructional depth. So in other words, we're going to try to, to, to put some of these real work world scenarios within our core classes so that kids understand why these things are important. We also want to improve our CCR readiness data by two percent. I'll show you that data here in just a second. But college and career readiness, that's a, that's a measure by the state. They give us nine different ways for our kids to be able to meet college and career readiness, and we want to improve that data by two percent for the two thousand twenty-five cohort. And again, we use the spring ACAP science data, also the ACT, uh, and our CCR readiness indicator, which is an aims to measure this. So workforce development highlights, got a lot of good things going on in workforce development. Like I said earlier, we received a fifty thousand dollar grant last year that allowed for eighty-one of our students to take dual enrollment courses that are specifically for career tech, like Dr. Spears mentioned, WELD, amongst the other sixteen programs that they have. They take it free of charge. So not only do they have the opportunity to be at college credit, they are also certified in what they take, ready to make three dollars more now. I was informed, Miss Houston, that we received another sixty-five thousand dollars for a grant that'll rope for CCR for this year. So we're going to be able to continue that for our kids, so that they're able to continue to take these courses free of charge. We'll also use some of that money for stipends, for robotics coats, for, for STEM camps in the summer. So we use that money as a fidelity to try to improve these, these science readiness scores. You can notice our participation in career tech courses way up, one hundred and thirty from the year before. We're, we're working hard to try to increase our non-traditional participants. In other words, we're wanting to show girls that they can be in engineering, they can be in engineering. All right, we, we've had all girls teams at the junior hub that placed nationally in the robotics competition. We also, uh, partner with, uh, the Chamber to create the girls with pink heart hats and try to recruit them into industries. We also recruit males into programs such as health science. Uh, one of the things at, uh, that we recently had a meeting with the, the Chamber, we currently use a program called U-Sides to, to gauge our students' interests, but also gauge their aptitudes to see where they can, where they can drop. A lot of our, our boys actually show a lot of aptitude for health science, they don't think about it. We're wanting to recruit them into those things. You can see that to date, for the past three years, the career tech department has been awarded more than eight hundred thousand dollars in grants and materials from our partnerships, either through writing and grants or through partnerships. I'll show you a picture of some of the things that we've gotten, uh, and are, we're about to receive soon, in just a minute. Again, fifth highest science proficiency gains in the state. The investment that we've seen at, at STEM level, at the elementary and junior halls, I've already invited Ms. Katie here, uh, to come and, and do an article on our new We Build It Better program at Collins. We're super excited about that. Uh, we spent well over a hundred thousand dollars to put, uh, put an amazing lab over there. Again, you're invited to come and see this. But we're going to do, um, we're going to have a, an article on the paper about it real soon. And again, Ms. Chrissy Holder is our teacher. Uh, we've, let me have you know, we've, we've implemented the Redstone Federal Credit Union branch at the high school to expand financial literacy, and we've also employed a, a career tech curriculum specialist to, again, try to push these concepts into the regular classroom. Dr. Sylvia Coleman's done a great job of this. So We Build It Better, again, we've implemented that from grades one through six. Uh, I, I asked the, We Build It Better folks today, uh, just a little bit about this. The program was only launched last year statewide. We were one of the first school systems in the state to put this program in place. Uh, currently, there are fifty-seven schools statewide that have implemented it. Yeah, we're one of the first, and we're one of the few that have implemented it fully, uh, in, in our school system and in our curriculum. Again, these are some of the great partnerships and things that we've had going on within career tech and workforce development. Uh, I will point you to the attention to the, the bottom left-hand corner. I know Ms. Childers has shown you a picture of this before. Uh, and Dr. Spears, today, while you were at Northeast, you might have seen some of these robots. Uh, but one of our partnerships with Dedcom, uh, they're, they are going to provide three of those robots to our school system. Those things are worth well over a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, in total, we're going to be receiving well over four hundred thousand dollars worth of materials, uh, from FANNIC uh, to be able to implement in our STEM classes so that our kids can become FANNIC certified. FANNIC certification is, is one of the, the best certifications you can possibly get. When I was talking to the, the gentleman that's over at FANNIC, he, he mentioned that a lot of times, many of these factories that, that use FANNIC, uh, they, they, they start kids out straight out of, of high school that have FANNIC certification, making well over fifty thousand dollars a year and the paper for college. So again, excited about that, and, and again, many of the other great things going on in workforce development. Our CCR rate, if you remember, we're, we're hoping to improve it by two percent. You can see the past four years here, where we've gone from an eighty-five point two five to ninety-four point three four. Currently, the state average is eighty-four percent, we're at ninety-four percent. Well above state average, and we're hoping to push that two more percent. Another thing that I want to bring to your attention is the career tech levels of core indicators of performance. This is something that was implemented two years ago by the state to show the feds that we're using our Perkins funds, our monies, uh, to, to try to push our kids to success. I'm proud to say that Scottsboro City Schools is one of the very few school systems that have met all seven indicators for the past two years, very, very few. Primarily because of proficiency in science score, we're one of the few systems that, that have shown, um, and, and exceeded far too the state target level. Safety supported schools, this is our third major goal. Our goal is to implement identified evidence-based restorative practices to reduce office referrals, out-of-school suspensions, and in-school suspensions by ten percent. Uh, we're trying to, to not only encourage our kids to better behavior, we're also trying to teach them why that behavior is important, that's restorative practices. So some of the critical initiatives, again, we're, we're looking to improve daily attendance and absenteeism because if our kids are at school, you know, they're going to be better fed, they're going to be, be, be better educated, obviously, but they're also going to, going to behave better. Uh, we're going to review and monitor positive behavioral strategies. We've talked a lot about that in here over the past several months. Uh, again, we've, we've been able to hire, uh, behavior interventionists, behavioral specialists in order to try to help us with these things. Our measures are going to be the attendance data and our SER report, which is our student incident report. So some of the highlights, again, our DRC hearings have decreased. DRC, that's Disciplinary Review Committee, these are for our serious incidents. They have drastically decreased over the past two years. We had a high, yes, please knock on that wood. We had a high thirty-five hearings in two thousand twenty-two, uh, twenty-three to just eighteen last year. And so far, again, knock on that wood there, Mr. Wood, we've had two proposed hearings so far this school year. So again, it's showing that a lot of the things that we're investing in and that we're doing is working. So full implementation of rest restorative practices. If you remember, we had a pilot at, at Collins last year, we implemented that across the board. I want to point out, so far, in two thousand twenty-three, uh, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, so far, we've only had thirteen in-school detention assignments and seven out-of-school suspension incidents. That's way down, way, way down, and principals, the ones that are in here, can you, can you attest to this that we're seeing a drastic decrease in serious behavior incidents? It's great to know. And again, that's because we wrote grants. A four hundred thousand dollar grant was written that had, that allowed us to hire Mr. Zach Perkins's behavior specialists and to hire Ms. Anna Rogers as behavior interventionist. These, these guys have done some great things with our kids. Because not only are they intervening, but they're teaching our kids why these kind of behaviors are not acceptable and why it will not be beneficial. will not be beneficial to you as you go forward. You know, when we were growing up, some of those older folks in here, our parents did that, alright? We had to step in and we had to bridge the gap now, and that's why we're willing to do this, that's why we wrote this grant to do so. Full implementation safety typical schools, again, we received a $129,000 school safety grant last year that has allowed us to implement a lot of cool safety things in our school systems, like goal buckets for every classroom, we've been able to send our, our SROs to TAVRO, AEDs in case of an emergency, and again, emergency signage. Another piece of supportive, notice it says safe and supportive, so part of helping us reduce some of these incidences, making sure that we're offering as many avenues for our kids to be as active in school as possible. One thing I want to point out is athletics. A lot of times when we talk about our continuous improvement, we're talking about academic things, and we leave these kind of things out. I want to shine a light on what we're doing with athletics, and also what our coaches are doing with the kids. Notice, Scottsboro is third among five Alabama high schools that was named in the national max prep cut rings. That's because of the success that we're showing in our athletic programs, because of what our coaches are doing with the kids, they deserve our support, they deserve that praise as well. That, that's big, guys. Now, notice here's the headups, Mountain Brook and Hoover, we're number three in the state. And our last goal is communication, communication goal. We're going to regularly communicate with parents through as many platforms as we possibly can. We're going to use things like, of course, our parent square and our websites, to try to get communication out. I will say this, Mr. Russ Smith, Miss Carrie Braden, they've worked hard on these things, and the feedback that I'm getting is that, thank you, we're getting a lot more communication. I almost pointed up too much, but I, hey, that's, that's a good thing. So you see there are a couple of pictures of our parent square and our new website, the website's great, if you haven't gone in there and clicked around and seen some of the things that are on there, again, great things that we're doing there. And again, the requests for greater transparency, that's why we're recording these things and we're posting these things, so that people will, will know more about what we do. In the past, it's kind of felt like since these, these meetings are open, and anybody is welcome, hey, we're, we're satisfying that, but, but obviously we're not. And so, that's why we've, we've moved to the video recording and posting of the work sessions, okay? Any questions at all about our goals and the highlights that we've seen? I want to thank Miss Childress and the board for allowing me to, to present this. Again, I, I give all the credit for these highlights to our teachers and our staff, they're the ones that, that do the work on a day by, day by day basis, also to our principals and sister principals. You know, you guys, you guys are the ones that are putting the, the teachers in the right places and giving them the tools to succeed, and I know it's a tough job, so thank you guys for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Haas.
Great job. Outstanding job in his role, in his role as assistant superintendent, that he oversees career tech development, and I think he was pretty generous on him, so he didn't give himself any credit, but a lot of the scholarship funds and a lot of the things that we've been able to do have really come back to the grants that he has written and have opened doors, as many of our directors have done that, and many of our staff have written grants, they do what it takes. Again, the strategic plan, our, all of these plans have to be in place, but the plans are not what comes to life, doing the work is what, is one that helps, is a game changer for our students. I think with our time this evening, if you all, if you don't mind, just, now, if you want to get up here and present, we want you to.
I can get ready along with it when it comes to that, and I promise James' grandmother I'd be home by.
Okay, we'll move to the next meeting, and again, I apologize, but I knew those other, Nelson and Caldwell needed to go to the parent meetings tonight, so at the work session, we'll finalize the, the school plan. I believe. The next one will have Nelson, Caldwell, Collins, and the junior high, and the high school. Or if we need to split that up, we can leave it on that, we want to get some finished though, if we have some to cancel, we have to be finished with them at the first, the first, the no-thing-the-board meeting, so we'll make sure we get there. Okay?
Dates for board work sessions and board meetings, next board work session will be October 17, 2024, at 5:00 PM, and the next board meeting will be November 7, 2024, at 5:00 PM. We probably need to get those done, like, can we do on a work session and so on?
We'll just come at the work session.
Do you want to split, like, maybe do two work session, three at the last board meeting, or three and two, however y'all want to do it, can you split them up or something?
Sure, we'll do our table.
Do I have a motion adjourned? About the second? Any discussion? Dr. Spears?
No, I don't have anything, thank you, play, all that you do. My tip's good, we, we're good, we, we're good.
We're good.
We still haven't had enough. We, we need the staff to see if it's working.
At any time we need to fix all those.
Chris, what's up?
I'm good, thank you everyone.
Mr. Doc?
I appreciate all the employees, I think that playground equipment's going to be really nice, thank you, Miss Pitts, for that, and I think it's going to be something to be proud of.
Most definitely. I appreciate Miss Bradsford being willing to collaborate with Miss Denson, that's doing a great part of what has made that happen, so I appreciate the collaboration among everybody. So, and I know that Mr. Arnold is not in here, but I know he's going to collaborate as well, too. We'll get yours too, Miss Smith, for it's all of us, we're going to collaborate and bring some more great things for the students, so I'm excited about it.
Thank you all for everything, I'm always super impressed whenever you guys start your presentations and stuff, because it's, it's just life, but there is so much that goes into that. I mean, I mean, down to the, to the child, and the mom who got over to school, and like, you know, all the stuff, and so, it's, whenever you just see it, you know, real hard numbers like that, you're like, okay, we're, we're doing good, you know? So, it's encouraging, and I thank you for that.
I would have to say ditto to everything they said, I always say numbers don't lie, and that, that's a proven point right there. So thank you for everything, each and every one of y'all, that I appreciate very much. Miss Childress?
I just appreciate everything from everybody, it's a group effort, I can't say enough about our team, they are excellent, and I can't wait for our principals to share their individual school information at times. And I appreciate the hard work of everybody, and we certainly appreciate our partners. Can't do it without our community.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? We are adjourned.
Mr. Williams?
I just want everybody to have a copy of that, I know we have one, I know we have one, but I, I need to get you to say it.